Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the order. The Osage Minerals Council Regular Meeting Wednesday, September 21st. We have had at least sale this morning, so we are starting at appropriate time. I've asked that a second chair tissue wallet do an opening prayer, and I have another request, not only in the losses from our districts of the Hamilton, Good Eagle, Shawshank families. We would like to ask a special blessing upon our council member, Ms. Curry. She is here with us today. It's a time that we reflect how much she means to us in our prayer to help her, strengthen her at all days and nights. Shout good. Let's go to the horizon.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Give us the strength to give us the strength to make the right decisions for our people. Bless Melissa with her health concerns at this time. Make sure that she gets well. And bless the Hamilton family, Good Eagle family, and the Shawshank family at this time with their loss. Ronnie D. was one of our favorite dancers. We'll always remember that. Ask this in our heavenly name. Amen.
Amen.
Please be seated. Joseph, could you do the reading of the deceased, please?
Stephen P. J. Vine, Austin, Texas. William R. Pennsyl, Las Vegas, Nevada. Carol K. Aiken, Sperry, Oklahoma. Janice Byrd.
Gentlemen, please be quiet while we're reading the legal of our deceased. Take it outside, please. My apologies, second chair.
Bellflower, California. Andrea L. Lake, Andrea L. Jay, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Mary K. Carter, Arnsdale, Oklahoma. Eva C. Thompson, Livingston, Texas. And Elizabeth C. Big Horse, also Oklahoma.
Our hearts and prayers go to each and every one of them. I would like to say that Mrs. Jay was a young woman and was taken so abruptly, just as Damien was. I really want to reach out to any of those families. I just want to tell them on behalf of our council, our hearts and prayers are there in support of you. Thank you. Thank you, second chair. Roll call, please.
Councilman Big Horse?
Here.
Second Chair Tisha Waller?
Present.
Councilwoman Curry?
Present.
Councilman Redcorn?
Here.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Here.
Councilman Ray Bard?
Present.
Councilman Schappford?
Here.
Chairman Waller?
Here.
We have a call.
And thank you. With that, I'd like to ask you entertain a motion to approve the lease sale at this time. Let's see, we have the document ready. Could you read it into the record? Subtle.
Second.
Second. I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Red Eagle, seconded by Councilman Red. Let's go ahead and read you the resolution, please.
Under authority of twenty-five CFR two twenty-six point two, the superintendent of the Osage Agency went the approval of the Osage Minerals Council and after advertising by candidate outlining terms of sale and giving legal description lands on September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, offered for sale twenty-six tracts comprising four thousand one hundred and sixty acres more or less for oil and gas combination mining purposes, being the twenty-sixth oil and gas lease sale. A total of one hundred and sixty acres sold for oil and gas combination mining purposes for a total bonus consideration of forty-seven hundred, which is an average of twenty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents per acre. A total of zero acres sold for oil mining purposes for a total bonus consideration of zero dollars, which is an average of zero dollars per acre. And a total of zero acres first sold for gas mining purposes for a total consideration bonus of four zero dollars, which is an average of zero dollars per acre resulting in total bonus consideration of forty-seven hundred. And the Osage Minerals Council at a meeting following the sale has carefully reviewed the schedule following the tract sold and it consists consensus that the leases offered bought a fair value and then the consideration of all is adequate. Therefore, be it resolved that since the bonus offered by the respective purchasers of leases appears to be adequate and represents a fair value of each and every one, the sale as a whole is accepted and that the superintendent is requested to notify all successful bidders that their bids have been accepted and direct them to furnish accomplish leases on departmental forms within twenty days after notice of acceptance of bids. And the chairperson of the Osage Minerals Council is hereby authorized to execute leases to successful bidders.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion, council?
What was the name of that company again that bought it?
CTA.
CTA, thank you, bro. Hearing none, call for the question.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair Tisha Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Councilman Red Corn?
Yes.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Ray Bard?
Yes.
Councilman Schappford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I'd like to go into the next agenda item, which will be superintendent.
Good morning, councilmembers and chairman.
Good morning.
This is Richard Willock, acting superintendent for the Osage Agency. And the report for this at this time is the aggregates, eight packs, it produced twenty-six thousand three hundred and ten point ten tons and paid twenty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents in royalty. Candy Creek produced twenty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-four point eighty-eight tons and paid twenty-one thousand five hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents in royalty. Wilson Ranch produced sixty-three point five tons and paid thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents in royalty. Herbank and Carols produced twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-eight point six four tons and paid twelve thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-nine cents in royalty. Smith Brothers produced three hundred and four cubic yards and paid two hundred and twenty-eight dollars in royalty. Rocky Bank produced one hundred and thirty-two cubic yards and paid one hundred and ten dollars in royalty. Sherwood Construction produced zero cubic yards, paid zero in royalty. Producing wells over fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-two, less three thousand two hundred and thirty, is all right. Permits approved, the seven workover permits, eleven plugging permits, three emergency plugging permits, and two drilling permits. And that completes my report.
Counsel. Councilman Red.
Hi, Chair. Acting superintendent appreciates your report. Questions on the aggregates, are the ones listed the only, all and only entities with a lease currently? Are there more included but haven't produced?
No, they've got a lease, we list them on there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, do we have any questions on superintendent report? Hearing none, the storm. Thank you, superintendent. We're going to move on down our agenda. We left this on there for Mrs. Garringer. If there had a BTFA update for us today. Mrs. Garringer, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, chairman and council members for allowing me to be here today. My name is Troye Carringer and I'm the fiduciary trust officer for the Bureau of Trust Funds Administration. And I also have Stephanie Davis here with us today. She's our trust accounts administrator. So what we've been working on lately is closing out the fiscal year. We're performing an administrative review right now on the PL account for the minerals estate and we're getting ready to close out that process. So we're getting close to completing that for the fiscal year. We remain available to assist beneficiaries at the local office here. Our number is nine one eight, two eight seven, five seven nine one. Or beneficiaries may contact the Trust Beneficiary Cost Center to update their accounts. That's all I have today, sir.
Counselman Red Eagle.
Thank you, Garringer. This is Councilman Red Eagle. I asked you, the last time you were here, when you introduced yourself about the old tribal council in the nineteen nineties and on back, way back. They had at least one and three-fourth headright, maybe two headrights that they always that they always used with mineral council, which was the tribal council at the time. Did you, when you had any, do you have any evidence or investigated investigation that what happened to those headrights? When the new government came in?
I'm sorry, sir. I was able to, of course, contact Janelle Perry, the former FTO that was in my position. And she provided me with the number of correspondents that went up and forth between the field solicitor, Alan Woodcock, and Janelle. And finally, the superintendent provided a letter to the OMC as well as to the chief. And so I provided that letter to Lacy Reynolds to circulate amongst the OMC. But the findings indicated that there are close to two headrights under the name of the Osage Tribe of Indians. And the superintendent basically stated that it was a matter for judicial review based on those changes from the two thousand six constitution.
Counsel. So what is the, what is the plan now? Do they, do they belong to the Osage Nation? Or do we get the headrights back?
I think it's... What I would recommend is that you contact the superintendent to discuss that matter. And then your attorney general may need to become contacted and involved in making a decision based on reviewing your constitution and how the assets should be basically distributed with the approval of the new constitution or the constitution from two thousand six.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair. Counsel.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. This is Tolly Red Corn on mineral council. Just for clarification, the quarterly report that shows residents generated and distributoral sage headright holders is also listed as the Osage Tribe of Indians of Oklahoma. Is that right?
Yes, for those one to two headrights?
No, no. I'm talking about the whole... Sorry, ma'am, I'm talking about the whole trust that goes bank your Osage headright holders. I see that report as referred to the same as the Osage Tribe of Indians of Oklahoma.
I'm sorry, councilman, we're having trouble understanding your question.
Okay. Do you, are you familiar with the quarterly report that's generated from the BIA?
I would say I'm not.
Okay. Just for, for the record, I'd like to state that in my view, the quarterly report that shows payment to all the Osage headright holders is also listed as the Osage Tribe of Indians of Oklahoma. So to me, this question goes deeper than just two headrights. And my feeling is we probably need to have that discussion because that's my one of eight.
Counsel, any other discussion? Counsel, if I could.
Ma'am, when was the language first drafted? Was it previous to the new constitutional former governor? When was that? Like I said, it's just Williams's reference mentioned that. And so whenever, what year was that, if you know? Whenever those headrights were, I guess, given to the minerals council, the nation, the member?
Tribal council.
Tribal council. Tribal council.
We'd have to look into that matter, sir. I don't know that information.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that's a great question. What we looked at as tribal council, it was identified exactly that it's been said by Councilman Red Corn. Also, the property in Kansas is written the same way.
All, all should belong to a headright.
Yes, sir. But I did, we, we received some effort at that time, but those were already identified because some of it went to OPEC. Some people had designated their headright for that. Even it was identified, but it all goes back to, Mrs. Garringer can check the PL account. And I'm with brother here, I did see where that, that shows up on certain accounting forms we've had. And with that, that's just the information I have. Councilman Red.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Garringer, also, we're still, as you know, we're still on the code, the same code of federal regulation. And on that, on that booklet, I believe it does say Osage Tribe of Indians. Is that correct, Councilman Red?
That's the way, chairman, that's the way I interpret it, which means our whole sage headright holders.
So you might, as a suggestion only, you know, look into this. We, we as a council will probably look into it ourselves. Thank you, thank you.
And thank you, council. Thank you, Ms. Garringer. Jay, do you think you'd like to add?
No, sir, not today. Thank you.
Yes, I do, I do want to talk about also, we'd have already looked at the return of headrights to the Osage Minerals Council and that that will be delayed then also. Because once they're identified, brought back to shareholder, they need to stay. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? I'll move on to the agenda. With that, I'd like to go into new business, Warrior, new oil and gas leases. Mr. Robert Naack. You're almost out of that slate. You've got a couple weeks.
Yeah, just two more weeks. Thanks.
I've done it, it's a tough one.
Right, I have, I'm Bob Nowell, I'm here representing Warrior Exploration Production. I thank the chairman and the council as always for the opportunity to be here. And here this morning to ask for oil and gas leases on ten quarter sections. Hopefully, Lacy had the opportunity to share with you the map and the list. There's ten quarter sections, if you'd like me to read. All ten, I'd be happy to do that. These are, this was a consolidated leasehold that was previously terminated for mine production. And so we are interested, Warrior's interested in acquiring these quarter sections as they, the proximity to our gas system is advantageous. And we would like to incorporate this into our drilling plans for the next couple of years so we can bring that gas project into our system and bring it to market. So we are asking for oil and gas leases on these ten quarters. At the twenty percent volatility rate, we're offering five thousand dollars per quarter section as the lease bonus, by standard of these terms otherwise. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yes, sir. Counselman Red.
I'll just take you to the second chair.
Thank you, sir. Second chair.
Yes, Bob, what, who was the previous Lacy's?
Well, it's had a complicated task, but the last one was Hard Rock operating, Mr. Steve Sewell.
Hard Rock, oh, okay. Got you.
And Mr. Sewell, you know, we're interested, Mr. Sewell is interested in maybe partnering with us on the development of space of that space.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Naack, I'm just curious, are these, this request for individual leases per track? Or were you, were these unitized or consolidated at one time?
That's a great question because you have, the interest in all ten is that there, it was a consolidated group of leases. So the existing infrastructure, at least the flow lines, are situated and such that would be best to produce all ten quarters, utilizing the existing flow line infrastructure that's already in place in order to.
So, yeah. The, the, formerly leases, this group of leases were a group of consolidated leases before?
Yes, sir.
And you're requesting that you lease these as consolidated?
Well, I realize, I realize that I probably need to nominate and get leases on all the individual quarters. Then when we have all wells, you know, situated so that they can produce on all quarters and I can request a new consolidation at that time. So I'm assuming that that would be the process I'd have to go through.
Okay. For the benefit of our headright holders, chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to maybe briefly describe the difference of what a consolidated group of leases are. It's, if I may?
Yes.
It's, the terms of the lease are the same. It just allows the last E, in this case Warrior, if they're successful in getting this group of leases, to be able to use a common tank battery for all the oil and gas produced to go to a common tank battery so that they don't have to send, send a tank to each and every single track, which would be very expensive and maybe not very practical either. However, as far as reporting production, unlike the old days and unlike a unit, one well on one track can't hold and tie up all the other tracks. Each track has to have production in paint quantities, a minimum of three twenty royalty, three hundred and twenty dollars per year in royalty to the tribe's royalty interest.
That's the minimum.
But, so when the last E reports production, they still report on a quarter section basis. If one quarter section failed to produce in pain quantities and they didn't renew the lease, get a new lease, that lease would be terminated by its own terms and the wells situated there on would have to be plugged within the ninety day period. So, so the request to have leases consolidated is merely a practical request to be able to utilize a common tank battery, common blow lines, gas metering, all going. If what the producer does on their monthly production reports is they know what each of those quarter sections produce. And it's not a guess. I mean, their pumper report to the, to, to their offices and they fill out the production reports and they show each, what each one of those quarter sections produce. And it's, that's fact, that's enough. So I just wanted to share that with the headright holders. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Naack.
Mr. Ray Bard brings up another point that he, I mentioned in the email. I said, are there a number of shallow, shallow man and wells here that were accepting plague and land over? Any well wars that are included within all ten quarters?
Yes, we are. Thank you. And I think under the consideration, I'd like to go with the separation of quarter sections. Let's take care of the council's directive and then we can move on into what else you would need to do under consolidation. I appreciate Councilman Ray Bard also on the production data of each quarter. The old days, you could just leave one well going and keep them all. That's not going to be how this will operate.
Okay, well, thank you, chairman. I would think, so, so the, the authority to consolidate a lease falls on the Bureau of Energy and Paris, is that?
That's correct.
Well, they need a resolution from us. Well, so if we accept this offer today, which we haven't yet, but if we do, would we also want to include in the resolution a, our authorization consolidate if they so choose to do so?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
But it gives them also a variable to go in and see which ones are worth consolidating. And I'd rather not get into what I think about the quarters, but I let you go find it.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel. But that's a great question. With that, counsel, do we have any other questions? I'd entertain a motion to allow these ten tracks.
I'm with you.
Subtle. And second, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Red Corn, second, and my second chair tissue wallet. Any other discussion? Lacy, am I allowed to go one resolution to list all of them?
Yes, so many of them, I'm writing down the record.
We're talking about the west half of section fifteen twenty-three nine, all of section sixteen twenty-three nine, southeast quarter of section seventeen twenty-three nine, northeast quarter of twenty twenty-three nine, north half of section twenty-one twenty-three nine.
Chairman, I have a question.
And it's a five thousand a quarter, twenty percent royalty, three years of all the well wars liability. Lacy will add more, Councilman Red.
Chairman.
And then Councilman Red.
At, for three-year primary term.
Yes, sir, thank you. Counsel.
Attorney General, what pipeline is, are there a oil pipeline going through this or a gas pipe?
There's gas. This is not too far from one of our main compressor stations. That was part of the, original part of the Scissor Tail system. So there's, you know, it's holding, holding the acid structure that's.
I could come out with the Crawford.
We, I mentioned, I think on previous meeting, we did get the easement from Mr. Crawford, so thankful for that. And we're currently in the process, after submitting everything and needing the application to the real estate office, we're waiting for acceptance by the Kemah family for the last part of that easement that we, to complete that connection with the Keystone system.
So that's all you did?
Yes. And I talked to Ms. Sanders this last week and I know they received that, that information, so we're just waiting for their response.
And you just cut it for, my apologies, we're just locating, so the council can be updated on it, especially this line. I think that's going to go, is there any other question on the agenda? With that, call for the question, there.
Second Chair Tisha Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Councilman Red Corn?
Yes.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Ray Bard?
Yes.
Councilman Schappford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, it's great, I appreciate it.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to move on down to new business, OGS Workshop. Councilman Red. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair. During our, good job, counsel. Received an email from, we get a lot of emails, what's going on in Oklahoma, nationwide. This one came across, Oklahoma Geological Survey hosting a workshop, November sixteenth, Wednesday, from eight o'clock to five to more at the Norman Technical Center there. I've been there before, really nice facility. I would like to request that the council make a motion that I and whoever else would like to attend this, that we include the two hundred dollar registration fee to everyone.
I need a second, please. I have a second, I have a motion on the floor by Chairman Waller, second, and my second chair tissue wallet. Open for discussion. Councilman Red Corn, anything you'd like to add?
It just kind of starts talking into the energy diversity, low carbon future. This is kind of conversations we're hearing outside. I think we just need to keep a thumb on what's going on, what's being stated. You know, what we need to be looking out for, we, we made a strong resolution on poor space. We own it, the Osage headright holders own it. We made that resolution to stuff like that. We need to stay on top of this game for the benefit of our share holders.
I also like to, heard about the produced water and navigating earthquake hazards.
Yes, sir.
Whatever, you know, especially what's been learned over the last decade.
Yes.
We're still learning about that.
Exactly, yes, sir. And going off that, I know you always, you know, Oklahoma tries to say the Osages are, you know, you know, county here, Kansas, we had to say, wait a minute, we have really good process here. Maybe the problems with Oklahoma and the way they're handling their saltwater. We've had those back and forths with the state. So we just need to make sure that they're not throwing something on us and to at least respond back. We've had this conversation before. Thank you for bringing that up, second chair. You know, especially that what happened in Pawnee County. Then with Shane Mattson talking about trying to get that one fault that's on to get it off and register because he doesn't believe it's there. So we just need people fighting in our corners or anybody. I think this is a great time to sit down and listen to what's going on now and in the future in oil and gas fields.
Thank you, counsel. With that, Councilman Red.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. I'd just like to, I might like to attend as well. I had, I had to look. I had, I had to look at the calendar. I did notice on Mr. Redcorn's information that he shared with us today that the, the registration fee goes out on October seventeenth. So if any of the other council members would want to join, Councilman Redcorn, it, it would be cost saving to make that decision before October seventeenth. And just like when I went and attended with, or y'all just filled in or once with Councilwoman Margot Gray, I think it'd be good when we, when we go out and pitch around like this and attend these kind of things that we, maybe not formally, but do so with the understanding that we might come back with a, with a briefing to the full council as to what, you know, happened. Just because not all of us can attend and just to share the information gain at these type of seminars and workshops. So it's just something to keep in mind, that's all. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, COVID's kind of cut that out, but that's a great recommendation. Whenever I've attended these workshops, I ask the actual event to give me an extra set to bring back to my Chief of Staff and then that way it's going to be dispersed out to the council. The, my resolution in the second will include all council, anyone who wants to go. And the date's actually October the fifteenth, get the room ready. You want to stay at this place, you don't want to stay across the road, I promise. With that being said, is there any other questions? Is that good enough for us, sir? I'd like to call for the question.
Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Reebard?
Yes.
Councilman Schaffelford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Ishewala?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Would that like to move on down to new business? The St. John Skinner Unit Proposal, Mr. Dale Alvarez, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Got you, excuse me, sir.
First, I'd like to start off with explaining that I had a, we were putting together a little group and we had some disagreements, so what I'm presenting and proposing here is totally separate. It's independent, it's myself and my abilities and capabilities. I am a technologist, I deal with technology. And my interest here is that I believe some of the technologies that I have could result in some very interesting results out of this, the site. I don't know how many of you had the chance to read through this proposal. But as a technologist also, I'm just very excited. I had, I met with Mr. Trudley, who I've never met before, and he explained to me they'll be speaking on another technology which accurately measures the flow of the well. And, you know, I think the future is in technologies. So we're going to extract more of our natural resources and do it economically and ecologically sound. And so what I'm proposing here is that we go out there and bring in some portable units to get some of these wells into production and see what, what we can do out there. If it, if it all works out well and, and I believe it will, we can produce and increase production, then I would like to come back and, and negotiate for lease on that property. I think it might be to the benefit of the mineral estate to see what kind of results some of these new modern technologies can, can, how they can impact some of the production of new wells, whether it's oil or gas and ecologically. So my proposal is that, that you give me the opportunity to go out there and work on some of these wells and evaluate and get some of these wells into production and show the difference between what anybody could do on a well and what our technologies could possibly do, which could be of very large interest. And if anybody has any question about our technologies, I can explain that. Any other types of questions, I'm totally open to any questions or comments.
Oh, I, I just want to please, you just talked about the technology, but are you going to be able to go in there, get the production started so we can get some sales going?
Yes.
And then show, you saw the differential of the, what your technology could also do. But for the shareholders, I'd like to know the difference endeavor goes. I'd like to get some production in the tank and get some sales going.
That's correct. And the initial phase is to get these wells into production and identify how much they're producing. Once we identify how much they're producing, that'll take a certain amount of time. Then, and maybe on one well, we can put some of the technology to show the difference of the production of your technologies and of regular wells producing.
Thank you, Councilman Revard.
Thank you. Yeah, my question, my first question is, you're asking, are you asking us for authorization for you to go out to this property and start working on some of the wells? See if you can get them to produce without a long gas lease?
That's correct. And at a certain point, if we can, then I'd come back and say, look, these were the results. I'm interested in the lease or not.
And Chairman, my concern is I don't think that we have that authority to allow anybody, whether not even us individually, to go out and work on any open wellboer without going through Bureau of Mineral Affairs regulations and governance.
Council, the divisional order demands.
I, I would think that would be a liability upon us. If we, if we were to verbally authorize someone to do that today, they went out there and somebody got harmed, we're exposed with some liability. Have you thought about that?
Yes, sir. I believe that a contract would be appropriate where we take on all liabilities and responsibilities and the mineral council isn't liable for anything. So it's totally upon us.
Well, the Bureau of Mineral Affairs governs our operations. And in order to work on wells, it depends on what you do. If you just wanted to test the well, that may not require a, a NPT or APD one thirty-nine form to do that. If you're going to acidize or break, change the construction of the natural assembly or whatever, would require permit. And how would you, what was, have you talked to the Bureau of Mineral Affairs about your plan?
No, I'm going to. Our plans right now don't require any modifications. It's bringing these pumps into, into production as we can, see what they'll produce. I had considered possibly a casing repair, but we're going to set that aside. But it's just about getting these wells into production, see what they'll produce, no major modifications, bring in portable units for the gas and generators and so on, tanks to fill up, evaluate what the production is on several of these wells. Take one of them, put some technology on there and see what the difference might be.
Okay, so Chairman, my last question for now would be, why don't you just lease, why don't you just offer to lease the property?
Well, that particular property is still a very unknown. There's been a lot of money spent on that property and they believe that it will require a lot more money to put it into operation. And I'm saying, well, there's a possibility it could be more efficient if these technologies.
So you want to go out and test the wells before you actually try to lease it?
Well, in a way, yes, but if it works, that lease would be available for auction. And, you know, anybody could bid on it, including myself, if it works.
So you're going to use your own money to do this?
Well, it was proposed to me that there's, that they, there's something that needs to be done with those wells and there's some funds that have been allocated by the Congress to do something here. Something has to happen. I'm saying I can go out there and prove that it can be economically viable and where people would have interest on that lease versus it just sitting there and eventually have to be plugged.
Well, right now, these wells are on our plugging list and I don't know how to remove them from the plugging list. I'm sure it takes some formality with the Bureau of Mineral Affairs. Have you talked to the Bureau of Mineral Affairs about having them remove from the plugging list? And would that require a bond on your part to do that?
I can inquire of them and from what I understand, there's some, there's high potential, in my opinion, potential that they're produced. I also understand that there's been other wells that were potential producers that have been plugged. And I, I think that the council, as I've come to understand, is all about production, not about the plugging. Plugging has to be done and those wells need to be plugged. But if there's a potential of production, that's what's, I think that is the goal of the mineral council on behalf of shareholders, it's production. And, and I think that there's an opportunity here to see if we can raise production. And if this works on these wells, I can make available technologies to all the local producers and that increases their production, which increases revenue.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Curry. And then Councilman Reddy.
Well, how long do you think you need to study these wells?
I think all this could be done within three months, within ninety days or so, except for the fact of the weather, I don't know.
I think, I still think that we have to have a lease, even if we have a short primary term or waived the bonus, or we still have to have a lease in place because any royalty that you would, any oil that you would produce, we wouldn't be able to sell it. We wouldn't be able to get a division order without, to pay the shareholders without that contract in place.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think in addition to the lease, then we will still need the contract you referred to as to how this is all going to work. But I think we could do a lease for a reduced bonus and give you a, however much of a primary term you need to see if they're viable or not.
At twenty percent.
At twenty percent. Well, he's saying a hundred percent here.
Yeah, excuse me, please. Something that had been brought up was that for this little project in that timeframe, anything that's produced would go to the shareholders, to the mineral council. We do not take possession of it, you guys keep it also. It's, so I think there's some legalities that would have to be worked out, you know?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, because there's, there's a couple of different possibilities here, but it's, it's all about legal matters. And it could work either way. But, you know, like I said, my interest is to show possibly that there is technologies that can help production on those stage. And the only way to really prove that is to show the results. And this might be the opportunity to prove out these results to, you know, I've got reports from other installations and applications, even one that I presented from the Texas Roadwood Commission. It shows results, but I think that if these prove out, it could be a great benefit to, to the Osage mineral estate. And, and that's my goal. I, and I'm not here just to make some money or to get contracts or plug in or do whatever. I'm involved in other industries and, and I see an opportunity here. And what was really exciting was this other technology that we might be able to bring in that measures accurately the flow coming out of the well. That's just amazing to me, so.
Councilwoman Curry, continue.
That's, no, I think it would be a good proposal if the lease and the contract were drafted properly. To give him a primary term, three or six months to do this evaluation, the lease is in place to collect the royalty from the shareholders.
Exactly.
And then we can adjust.
Just like what I did on St. John's.
My other concern is, we're talking about using this money that was appropriated last year. Is that money in a revolving account or where is it? Because we're, we're.
No, we would have to rebudget items and identify. Is it available for a project such as this, Chief of Staff?
We would have to encumber it before October one. And it is available for the St. John's.
I'm going to let her finish and I'll go to Councilman Reddy.
That was my concern, that today is the twenty-first of September and if the funds haven't been obligated or put in a revolving account, how are we going to lose them? October one, they'll go back and get the treasure.
That's correct.
That was my only other concern.
Yes, ma'am. Are you done there?
I'm done.
Councilman Reddy or the Councilman Revard?
Thank you, Chairman. As, as y'all know, I am in contact, I went and seen the Attorney General last week, the week before last, and asked him, does this money have to be spent by October first? And he said, yes. He said, yes, it has to be spent by the end of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. So no matter what we do, you know, it's up to the council. It all started, just with the new members, newly elected. It all started in twenty sixteen when Todd Redcorn asked me to help him with a project concerning orphaned abandoned wells in twenty sixteen. That was what, six years, six years ago, seven years ago? That's probably, it started then. And just, just to break history, hear me out now, I don't want to know, everybody interrupted.
That's correct, Chairman. Continue.
It started in twenty sixteen, we got together with Bill Lynn, our geologist. We were with Flotter Grant, is that right, Bill?
Yes.
Flotter Grant, and it was called the Orphaned Well Grant. And the D E M D, Department of Energy and Mineral Development, gave us that grant for a hundred and, what was it, a hundred and ninety thousand, something like that.
Yeah.
So we started working on abandoned wells. We found out, even, even the council at the time, the third mineral council was Chuck Councilman Chiswell was on. I came to him and we got Henry Redding and Homer Holden and others and we asked if they have a list of the abandoned wells. And they said they did not.
Yes, sir.
So I told them I would call the superintendent, who was Robin Phillips at the time, and asked Henry if he would give us a list. And she said, yes, I will. But she said, have the chairman write a, write a letter to her and she would give us that list of abandoned wells. And she, and within two weeks, we got that list. Sixteen hundred and two wells of abandoned orphaned wells was on that list. That's how it all got started. Geologist Bill Lynn at that time said, we have some keepers out there that can produce wells. Not many, even, even our former late Chairman Andrew Yech said, there not going to be many. And he would correct me, there not going to be many, but he's going to produce more, probably less than two percent. But out of that two percent, Geologist Bill Lynn said, the Skinner, that's how the St. John Skinner Unit came into effect. And there are others too out there, the Avant Mission, as well as other, other regions. So that's how it all got started. So we found out later on that the St. John Skinner Unit was on Osage tribal land. The chief had bought it for seventy, seventy million dollars or something like that. Anyway, that was on, it was on, it was on that piece of property. So we figured, Councilman Redcorn, I said, well, it's, we own the top.
Apologies.
What more advantage can you have than that? So that's how, how this got started. St. John, St. John, I went out there with Bill Lynn's files and looked at it and there was several disposal wells out there, tank batteries, some were damaged, some were not. But it was a perfect scenario, it was a perfect scenario to operate the well. That's how it all got started, twenty sixteen, five seventy-seven. The third mineral council asked for money to, to plug wells. The Department, Department of Energy gave them three billion dollars.
That's correct.
And they asked for ten million, I believe, and they didn't get it. So they ended up getting three billion. By the time we were elected in twenty eighteen, we received the money. We were lucky recipients to receive the money in twenty eighteen. So we commend the third mineral council for doing that. They're big, they are a big, big commitment for asking for that money. They went to Washington DC, they did a lot of things to, to our advantage and we're hoping to get more and I believe we got some more too, clearly. And so that's how, that's how this got started. If you, if anybody hasn't told you yet, that's exactly what happened. So now, here we are with the St. John Skinner Unit, Justin Patterson's been out there and he said, this is a viable place to produce oil. Ain't that right, Justin?
Yeah.
It's exactly right. That's why we're arguing about where this money has to go, where this money has to go, where this money has to go. We, we had to decide. But one thing is, for darn sure, we got to spend it by October first. Because the Attorney General, I went to him in person, I wish he was here right now, he would probably agree. He said, do you mind, mind you have to spend that money by October first? So that's, that's my point today. No matter what we do, no matter if we go to BIA, we give it to him, we give it to these guys. guys, whoever we get, it doesn't matter to me, that doesn't matter to me at all. We have to produce oil for our shareholders out there. That's the main bottom line right there. So whatever we do, whoever leases, whoever wins, doesn't matter to me, we just got to produce oil.
Amen.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman.
Councilman Reddick.
Well, several things here. These wells are on our well plugging list. We spent a considerable amount of money attempting to plug the wells. During the plugging process, we discovered that each of these wellbores, one after another after another, that we rigged up on and worked on, it became apparent that they may have potential for production, saw signs of oil gas that possibly indicate commercial amounts. And the thought was, if I'm not mistaken, that we probably shouldn't plug the well, maybe we ought to reevaluate. Set it aside, our geologist Bill Lynn calls and keepers on our well plugging list to look at later. In some reports, he says mockballing, we mockball these tractors, which is fine and dandy, except they're on the plugging list, and Bill Lynn, our geologist, prepared a report for Tolly Redcorn, Councilman Redcorn, in advance of going to Congress to ask for two hundred thousand dollars of congressional appropriation to operate these wells. At the time, there was talk about in a pursuit of a nonprofit entity to use to operate under, which we approved to do, to pursue, not to actually do, but to pursue, that was, that was a contention of a formal meeting. But, so, just like Councilman Reddick, a little history here. So, we are awarded, maybe is the correct term, I'm not sure, but Congress appropriated two hundred thousand dollars for the Minerals Council to operate the St. John Skinner Sand View.
That's correct.
Not X, Y, Z, from Denver, Colorado, or from Houston, Texas. The Mineral Council asked for this money for us to operate the Skinner Sand View, St. John Skinner Sand View. In that money, according to Councilman Reddick, it's verified that it will evaporate, disappear, no longer be available, come October first. That is the deadline of Congress, I've talked to other council members, that thought, well, why couldn't we just go back and ask again? I believe Councilman Shapler, and I briefly had a, had a conversation, well, they gave it to us once, after we do our due diligence, we can always go back and ask for it again. But, with that being said, I'm not concerned about the October first deadline, that shouldn't make a decision for us to be on the spot, to make some, shoot from the hip decision to, to spend what I consider a considerable amount of money. Two hundred thousand dollars is a good chunk of change. I'm not prepared to make any decisions on it today. I've not heard Mr. Oliveres mention one single name of one wellboar. I'd like to know, what well would you rig up on first? What's it producing from today, or was, when it was shut in? Were you gonna go up the hole in that well? Were you going to just acidize it, were you just gonna turn a pumping unit on? It's got a gas engine on the pumping unit, or electric motor? Is there electricity to the lease? I understand that there used to be electrified, and the infrastructure, because of the nature of the weight, was canceled, and the foreclosure on the property and all, I think that infrastructure deteriorated, to where you may have to have a significant amount of capital to bring back in electricity. Maybe there's enough gas to run gas engines. These are things that we've not talked about, for the ones that talked about, using the Osage Nation's money. It was one thing, it's one thing for me to waste maybe, or gamble my own money. I'd go to, I was at the casino the other day, and those machines were calling out at me, and I just kept going through the van corner, you know? And I just walked right by him, I don't hear you. But it's one thing for me to spend my money, but if my next door neighbor gave me forty dollars and said, would you play Mr. Lucky, or Lucky Duck, or whatever that is, you know? I feel like, okay, you know, do I do a two dollar bet, or do I do? I feel more responsible to their spending their money. If we're gonna spend the Osage Nation's money, we're all members of it, but if we're gonna spend the nation's money, we need to be responsible. And I don't feel like I have enough due diligence performed to make a responsible decision today. And I know October first is right around the corner, but, so, it's not that, that what, what Dell has brought to us may or may not have merit, it's not a matter of having merit, I just don't have enough information to be asked to vote on anything that has to do with this property without more information, and without going around the corner to talk to the Bureau of Indian Affairs to see how we maneuver through their policies, procedures, the Code of Better regulations, to, to be able to rig up all those wells, to, I would think Superintendent Winlock, first thing he'd be concerned about, if we're taking this well off the plugging list, who's taking plugging responsibility for it? Who's putting up bond sufficient to plug that well if it doesn't work out? If they don't want to take it off the list, and then have to put it back on the list? So if we touch that well, you kind of owe it, you touch it, it's yours. So we just did that today in a lease sale. You're buying that lease with the understanding that once it's crossed the top, when they started that policy, I don't know, I don't agree with it, but whoever buys that lease has to take over every wellboar on that property. And that's without having access to the records to see if there are any wells on the property. So that's a, a real, a subject for another time. But, I'm thinking that if we, if they were to touch that well, that's theirs. Mr. May just now bought a lease from us, ten tracts with a bunch of wells on it, he stood right there and said, I'm gonna take responsibility to plug each and every one of those wells, however many there are, I'm taking responsibility for it. So, if we were gonna go work on one of these wells, I think the BIA, my question, who's going to plug that well? If you're taking it off the plugging list, who's gonna plug it when, if and when you're all about doing your little meal life? So those are just questions that I had that I want to share with everybody. I'm just not prepared to vote on anything today.
Yes, ma'am.
And so with that, I appreciate the opportunity to say those things. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Reddick.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Reddick gave a really good summary of where we started, where we're at now, and I agree a lot with what Mr. Revar is saying too. The fact of the matter is, we paid out seven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars on a header right, last payment. My prediction of that's gonna go down, because the highest posted price has gone down, and it's highest in June, it's gonna go to July, it's even worse, I would say down, and even when I talked to Lacy yesterday, we're hitting July, August, September, those three highest posted prices are all headed down. So if we don't increase the royalty barrels, our checks is going to be less. So, and per the Constitution, which I've been kind of picking at the tune on today, I guess, we're improved leases and look for other forms of development. Now, I'm okay if the Mineral Council is not in favor of what we're gonna do, or what this gentleman just walked in to me and talked to me, I, I don't know what he's told you as much as he's told me, okay? That's where I'm at. What we did work on is Mr. Lynn, and bringing in a group to operate that and others. Well, we got in a big hiccup there. They're not giving up, they want to come back. So we're at a quandary with this money to spend it or not. So that's kind of where we are. I agree with you, Mr. Revar, we don't have, maybe we don't have enough time, maybe there's a solution, I don't know. But I want to say, if we do nothing, these royalty barrels are gonna stay the same, you do the math, the HPP price goes down, and we're explaining to our shareholders why their check went to seven, six, three, oh, and now it's heading back down. So if whatever we do, I would love to challenge our Mineral Council, we got to start increasing the royalty barrels somehow, some way. If we, and I get a feeling, you know, we, and I'm learning it too, we launched this, Mr. Reddick and I, and just like President Trump and the Democrats, they can't get anything rolling in Washington. Well, you get stuff in the political arena, and it might not happen, and I'm seeing that there, and I might be seeing it here. So, and we got a new council, and we're respecting each and everyone, and maybe we need to pull back and do contracts, rather than try to do this stuff ourselves. I want to say that this gentleman, Oliveres, came and asked, talked to me with Mr. Hessler over here. I've since learned there's been a disagreement between the two, so I'd like to hear what Mr. Hessler has to say about this same process, so then I've got another thing I'd like to add beyond what Mr. Hessler's saying, if that's okay with the chair.
That has to be okay with the council. If anyone has any concerns.
I don't really need to hear what the differences, differences are between Mr. Hessler and Oliveres, but I'd like to hear, I believe I know what Mr. Hessler's opinion is on certain assets of the oil business, because they've been, both been here, I think, as many times as I've been here. So, I'm curious, like I said a minute, and what Tolly and Mr. Reddick were talking about, all these gentlemen made some powerful points today, and again, the nation, the resolution, we requested two hundred thousand dollars to do certain things. We've had three hundred and sixty-five days to do those certain things. Now, today, we need to make a snap decision. I'm, I'm a freshman councilman there, there's four, three other ones, and we, we yet to really get up to speed on all this, and they've been out to the Skinner unit, who I have not been out there. I worked on pulling units and a lot of things back in my youth, so I have a little bit of knowledge, because I've seen Chuck Spurges sitting there, him and I used to play football together back in nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine. So I mean, these gentlemen here are the knowledge, Oliveres has a, has a certain knowledge base. But I've yet to hear other people's knowledge base, similar to what he's having, talks about technologies. I understand the definition of word technology, I need a little bit more than technology. I need to have the definition, and maybe some quantifying, to see where it's working at, some, you know, some words we're doing in these other areas, and that's why I'm bringing it here, that's why I feel a strong measure that we can succeed here today, being able to access the BIA's records, to look at these, these units out there, Tolly mentioned, you know, making the production a lot. Is this one lease gonna make the difference? I don't know, I wish it would, but I think I see these gentlemen here, I think the one thing that's gonna help production is free up the drilling process, and that these gentlemen gets to plug in some holes in the Osage. That's what I feel, a real big question. Well, yeah, I mean, we're talking about plugging every time, so, but anyway, that's, that's where things are gonna really pick up, not like more and dirt, and law street and things, I cut the control of the price of oil. You know, I, I try to put my arms around a lot of this stuff, and it's a lot of, a lot of information to take on. And I went to college, I've got an education, but yet this is all relatively true. But again, it's, when you hear people, you got, you're in a room full of experts, who do you believe? Which one has the best option, which one has the best? At the bottom, the bottom line is, what's in the best interest of the Osage shareholder? That's it, that's the bottom line. How do we get, how do we get to that road to benefit all of our shareholders? I, I, you know, like I said, I've got my ideas, all these guys' ideas, Mr. Revar's ideas, Byron's ideas, Joe, everybody here. But again, it's to be back, kind of put it on the fast track, you know, if we don't spend this, we're gonna lose it. I have a strong feeling that if we have enough information, and we go back to Congress, you know what, we've taken a little more time, now we've got even a stronger case to present to you guys, we've talked to three other people that have similar qualifications as Mr. Oliveres, and we're very confident, neither can, whoever else we choose, instead of now instead of two hundred thousand, we need a hundred thousand, or we need five hundred thousand. But like Mr. Revar said, I'm not really comfortable to, to make that decision today. I'd much rather not put my money in the slot machine.
Lucky duck.
Yeah, and wait, you know, in another time, where I'm feeling lucky, my hands are itches, things like that, whether what the lottery numbers were last night, you know, whatever that happens to be, but again, Mr. Big, Mr. Chisholm, he's been on here before, Kenny, Melissa, we're all, we're all kind of doing stuff, and so it's exciting, what we do, the best thing we can do for the Osage shareholders. But again, what's, what is best for them is, is me being able to gather enough information and have the time to do that, to make the best qualified decision for the people that put me in this chair, and I'm glad I've had that today.
Chair. Thank you, Councilman, and then Councilman Bigler.
I'm just gonna ask you, are we gonna be able to listen to Mr. Hessler?
I, the council, I'd like to wait, because I'm actually reading Resolution four, four, eight, four, that was done a year ago, that gave you all the rights to take care of what you have to request, that's first thing. With that, I don't feel, I'd like to move on with the agenda.
Can I?
Yes, floor is yours.
I talked to Mr. Hessler earlier, you heard him, what I'm gonna talk about.
You can.
It's fine. I mean, I can't wait.
Sure.
Then I want to say this, Lacy, we talked, Mr. Lynn can move forward, is that right? With spending this money, we've already passed that resolution.
Right here.
So, if Mr. Lynn, we PO, and give it to Lacy, and her and Bill get that lease up to snuff so we can operate it, put it in a lease sale, or whatever, that's our call. So I would like the chairman to direct Lacy to, to go ahead and establish that PO so we can get that lease up and ready, so we get an auction, or get a blue, and that's the way, and then Bill can work with his boys, and whatever you guys decide out there in the field to do it. That's my question to you, Chairman, and I think we can do that without a standing resolutions we already have.
I'd like to hear from Councilman Bigler.
Chairman, you gonna answer my question?
Yes, and I, that's why I read out four dash four eighty-four, allows us that opportunity now. Lacy, do I need a resolution to take care of the request? And then, Councilman Revar, since she answers. Okay, Councilman?
Yeah, okay, so the resolution, that we went to Congress, and I listened to the presentation to Congress, and the rest of the council hadn't, four of the council members weren't even on the council at the time that we went before the Congress, and I heard the presentation of what we requested this money for. We authorized, Councilman Reddick wanted to go to Congress, to obtain two hundred thousand dollars to operate this, for us to operate the St. John Skinner Sand View. Following that, that was with the idea that we were going to form an entity to operate it, which we have not done. We told them that, and we haven't done it, all right? We also were going to get an oil and gas lease. Now all of a sudden, everybody's talking about doing stuff without an oil and gas lease. We were gonna get an oil and gas lease to operate the St. John Skinner Sand View. We have a resolution to do that. We submitted a lease request to the BIA, and it's another resolution we failed to include in our little package here, about getting a lease from the Osage, from the Bureau of Indian Affairs. We requested a lease with a six, I think, a one-eighth royalty maybe, if I remember right.
Yep.
A, no bonus, and the superintendent wrote us a letter back, and our staff circulated to the Mineral Council members, and he noted this day, we've never discussed that letter. It's a two paragraph letter, if I'm not mistaken, it's Superintendent Phillips at the time, saying, okay, I got this request, asked a couple of very key questions, is it the Osage Nation leasing this as less, as the lessee? So is it the nation leasing to the nation? Or is it the nation leasing to the Osage Mineral Council? Who is the lessee? That was one question. And hell, I forgot what the other question was. It may had to do with, with, uh, bonding. Because who's going to bond it? What entity? I don't remember the details. But we did get a response from the superintendent on our request for a lease. So that was an acknowledgement from this mineral council, OCS mineral council four. Acknowledging that we needed a lease to operate these wells. And we asked for one and they, it wasn't that they weren't going to give us one. They just needed more information from us and we never even discussed it, much less made a formal response to Superintendent Phillips. So, the money that we are, that's earmarked for us, that is going to evaporate on the thirtieth or first of October. Was all, was given to us strictly for us to operate the St. John Skinner sand unit, which we're not talking about doing. And for us to get an oil and gas lease, which you'd have to have an oil and gas lease to do. So I say, let them have their money back. Tell them that we're probably going to be knocking back on their door in a month or two and we get it together. You know, if you remember before we went to Congress. I remember Councilman Redd calling telling us that Bill Lynn spent, was up till midnight the night before preparing a report. Maybe it was, maybe it was in preparation of the meeting where we outlined, probably in the end of the, the Congress. But anyway, it was a late night report that he put together. He put together a, a report on this property. He presented it to us and it was pretty general, if I'm not mistaken. Because I don't remember that we talked about what we're going to do on each one of these wells and what we expect out of each one, what the rate of return would be. I do remember him saying, what kind of estimated barrels per production if you turn it on and operate it? I think he said between four and six barrels a day. And when Councilman Redd corn was telling that to Congress, I think it was Congressman Tillman, I could be wrong, couldn't be Congressman Pickers. What I've said, oh, forty-six barrels? When I'm thinking, I was on the Zoom call, I didn't take the talk, I was just silent. But I said, no, he didn't say forty-six, he said four-two-six. There's a big difference. And, uh, uh, but then, and but, uh, uh, but I also remembered that, that, that Mr. Lynn's report said it was a fifty-fifty chance that it can be commercial, that it can be, uh, successful. He put a fifty-fifty on it. So is that what we're talking about? Are we going to gamble the tribe's money on fifty-fifty? You know, uh, in the real world, you, uh, an oil and gas company, and they all differ. Uh, and I'm just a poor boy, so mine doesn't even count. But, I mean, when I say poor boy, I'm just, the size of my operations, I'm small and I don't have guidelines like the big boys do. They have to have a certain rate of return. They want to have a certain, for their capital to invest, before they make that final decision, they want to know what their rate of return is. Per dollar that they spend in capital. And they also want to know the time period of when payout would occur, if it does occur. They also have a risk versus reward calculation. You know, mom and pops like we've got around here don't do that kind of stuff. I mean, they kind of do in their own way, but we've not done that. In Mr. Lynn's report, even though it was a nice report and certainly on just short notice. We need more time and we need to look at the property and more debt before we start spending OCS nation's two hundred thousand dollars. But I don't think that we have, and I know that our chief of staff has just told you by the nod of her head that, oh yeah, we can do it, we can do whatever we want to with this money, I guess. Uh, I don't, I don't agree with that.
That's incorrect.
Okay, well then whatever it was, I, I'd like more information about what you asked her and what she's response is. I don't think that we have the, the authorization to spend the, the OCS nation Congress's two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, without further action and more information, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you today, Councilman Redd.
Thank you, Chair. Um, we have, we've done tests. Now, talk about a lease here. And we can beat this one, I mean, I agree with it. Talk about a lease here. But Bill Lynn's been out there testing. Bill Lynn's took the test on the Burbank, a couple other wells we did on the working well. And we kept the BIA abreast of what we were doing day in, day out. When those volumes were produced, sent it back down home. BI is okay. BI just told us, don't, don't mess up that. And we called each and every day. So Bill, we've been down this road. What I'm talking about is two hundred thousand dollars to give Bill the ability to get out there and see if we can get this lease up and go. Now, we talked about operating without a lease. That was before the election and we caught, we caught a lot of stuff for that and rightfully so. Because a lot of other Indian tribes around us are running around and they're just operating without a lease. And they just, and the BI just turning their back and they collect a hundred percent of it. So we thought, my heck, let's look into it. It wasn't to do it, it was to look into. Well, it got, you know, and I understand, I, I, I do respect every piece of the information I get from everybody. Because it makes you think beyond what we're doing. But I still think that the way it is with the resolutions we pass and these new folks don't have to meditate or worry about it. Because we've already, we've already proved it. If Bill Lynn takes off and Lacy establishes PO, there's already a resolution to have to get it done. So that's what I'm asking and, and then we won't have to vote on it. It's already been approved. Chairman, direct Lacy. Bill Lynn, take off. You guys work on this thing, see if we can get, get some life in not only this one, see what we can learn, what we can do on this location. It's been blessed by Congress and I bet you we have talked three or four times to the AG. So I hear what you're saying, Mr. Revar.
Are you going to share that with us?
I don't think he quite agrees with what you're saying. And, and I respect that. I mean, this is a known, unknown area. We're, we're talking, getting off the beaten path, but I'm still saying royalty barrels, if we don't do anything, let's do something. And, and I'm with you, let's, uh, Mr. Shackler brought up some great ideas. Yeah, let's get back into that location. I'm willing to go with that. What do we need to do to uncourt and get that information out of BIA? Bill Lynn and I talked on the NIA JMS and I told Bill yesterday, this all falls through. I'm going to NIA JMS and we'll see if we can get that thing launched. Because that's, that's a court that we can get this stuff going. But I mean, Tolly, I got to do something. Like I'm not starting to sit here and draw my salary and watch royalty barrels go down and our headline payments go to the bottom. Because that's where it's headed with the highest posted price. I just, I just want to say, if we, if we say no to Bill, we say no to Lacy, we tell Chairman no, then okay, I'm all ears. What are we going to do now? And I'm ready, let's, let's talk. And I'm, I'm not, Paul, I, you know, I hear everything you say, you don't know. The things I, the things you say, I'm digesting, I'm bringing them through, which Susan said the last time. Those are good thoughts. You have, we had to, we had to give it that mental exercise and here's what we're going to do. So the feedback from each and every one of us, but at some point, we got to get, to me, we got to get those royalty barrels moving upward. So I can continue because a lot of these women out there, they're women calling and they're saying they can't pay their bills. They can't make their rent, their, 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 their car payments and their electric payment. And I'm like, man, can I do better as a council person? I mean, don't sit there, Tolly, just, you know, you got, you got to come up with these ideas. It's in the constitution, I got to look for other forms of development. If I'm not going to do this, what am I going to do next? So I, I just want to say, you know, I want to keep going. Tolly, let's keep going. We killed this one, that's cool, I'm okay with it. There's a lot of concern, you know, but as far as I'm concerned, the, the resolutions are in place. Bill's ready to roll, and Mike, and we have checked, I've talked to the AG about it. We had to go talk to them. Because they're going to approve the contracts, they're going to approve. And, you know, they talked to us and, you know, they know we're coming. They know the whole process. These are the people that are here to help us in those kind of situations. We've talked to Tim Dowd, we've talked to all our attorneys, we've brought in some of the best. You know, and they're, they're, some of them are on this OCS too, that we talked to them. So, I say, Chairman, with all due respect, direct our chief of staff and let's get this PO established. Thank you.
Councilman. Thank you, Chair. When I talked to the, uh, AG, he did say, the first thing I asked him. So we got some money from Paul Sabre, my cousin, and she's the one that sponsored the bill. And there were four hundred thousand total, total. Two hundred thousand is supposed to go to another source, I think, to our data collection from the BIA lease. And the other two hundred thousand is going to the St. John Skinner unit. He did say, he made it very, very clear, we can spend that money, we can appropriate that money any way we want, this council. He said. So I'll take my, take my word on that, I'm trying to be a minimal word, so, as we said. Thank you.
Yeah, if, if the Attorney General, you know, Councilman Redd corn and Councilman Redd Eagle just now both told us about meetings and conversations with our Attorney General of the OCS nation. Why don't we know about that? How come we weren't briefed on that? Why weren't we told that these meetings were taking place? Why don't we have these opinions, uh, to discuss, uh, when only two of the council members know about it? Uh, so, uh, if the Attorney General says that even though that we went to them, to Congress. And asked for two hundred thousand dollars for a specific use. And in this case, for the mineral council to operate the St. John's inter sand unit. And now he's telling Councilman Red Eagle that we can spend it however we want to, on anything that we want to spend it on. That's the Attorney General's opinion? Would, did he put that right? Do you think he would put it in writing? That we could spend that money? Could we go down to the casino, uh, with it?
Sure.
Uh, he will play Lucky Duck? Listen, here's what I'm concerned about. If we're having authority to spend that two hundred thousand any way we want to, according to Mr. Patterson? Well, good, let's look for some use to spend it. But is St. John Skinner sand unit the best place to spend that two hundred thousand dollars? I'd like to be convinced that that would, so if we agree today that we can spend that money as, uh, as Ms. Reynolds told us that we could?
No.
Okay, so if, if we can spend that two hundred thousand any way we want to, like Councilman Red Eagle just said. Then let's look for a place to spend it. And let's not make any decision today about doing it on the St. John Skinner sand unit. We can spend it however we want to. So let's just, let's figure out some place to spend it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'd like to go to Chief of Staff real quick, uh, clarify that one issue that I did ask that we move on the agenda. Uh, when I give her the, I'm trying to get done with this.
I am.
I've been here fifteen years. Go ahead.
I'm saying that we can give Bill Lynn the authority to spend the two hundred thousand on behalf of the minerals council to operate the St. John. I'm not saying that we can go spend it wherever we want. I wasn't part of that conversation. I'm still waiting on the Attorney General to put it in writing to me. I have.
Exactly.
Do we hear it?
But I do know that we can let, have Bill do what he needs to do to operate St. John.
Actually, it had your name on it.
Okay. Come on, it's yours. Can I say?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Uh, we passed a resolution to do away with Chairman talking to anybody. Before, I'd say, Chairman, can I go talk to the AG? And he'd say, what did it like now? We did, we passed it. And I'm like, okay, does that mean I can talk to D and D? Can I talk to the chief? Can I talk to Congress?
Just wait for them to call.
You, you made the resolution, and I agree with it.
Well, why don't you share it with us?
Wow.
Yeah, you just brought it on us right now.
Mark, it's who it is, Mr. Red Eagle just told you.
We have a few more comments and then we're moving on.
I don't quite agree with that because the St. John unit has gone through, uh, uh, St. John Skinner has gone through tremendous amount of research through our geologists and several others. The whole process and those were spelled out in our committees and we did away with the committees, we kept things going. That information is in his office, you know, I've talked to him, I go in there and talk to him a lot and most every day, you know.
Can we look at it?
Yeah, we, we talked about it.
Let's look at it. Have you seen it? I have some.
I'm just saying that it's there and the new people, with all due respect, this was passed in the minerals four. So my understanding, the resolution's already there. Bill Lynn did launch a PO. And we're, I would say, Lacy, run five AG one more time. She's always bawling me out, you know, this stuff's got to be written. You're right, it's written. We're going to make sure that's written because, you know, but that's, uh, that's how he's telling us. And, and I would welcome you or anybody to pick up the phone and call the AG. We can now.
Can we table it and have the AG come over?
All right, good thing.
Let's have the AG come over and visit with us. Is he around the corner?
We already have a standing resolution due.
Oh, really?
I think so. We heard from our staff and our chief of staff.
We don't even know about what you just said. We haven't seen this report that you're talking about, all this information about this well.
Well, I.
Do we look at it?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes, this has been sent out to everybody more than once.
Oh, really? Well, okay, then let me ask, let me ask you, Kenny, let me ask you. Do you know, uh, Councilman Shackler? About these wells and what wells we might want to rig up first? And what we're going to do to, what we might expect out of it? I know you don't, and I don't. Uh, and if we're going to spend somebody's money, other people's money, OPN, right? Other people's money, if we're going to do that, let's be responsible.
Spending my.
Let's be responsible and let's learn about it and see what we're going to do with it. Well, I'm not prepared to vote to spend two hundred thousand dollars without any information.
You've already voted on it, the minerals four.
We voted for, to ask Congress for two hundred thousand dollars for us to operate a unit. And that was after we would form an entity, after we got an oil and gas lease. Otherwise, because that's what we were doing, we were forming the entity to operate with. And we went and asked the superintendent for a lease on this property and we never got it.
I'm hearing you, Mr. Revar, but I don't think the AG quite agrees with what you're saying. And with all due respect, well signed, he's the one going forward, passed the resolutions that we passed. We got to go through him to make sure the contract works.
I just, I just would like.
He doesn't quite agree with what you're saying.
I'd like more clarity.
I, and I would recommend, I mean, if you want me to go, but I can and let him explain it to you. But it's pretty simple. I mean, it's pretty, he's saying, you guys have every right to utilize this for production and try to increase these barrels out. Are we telling the same thing we're telling the council? We got it, we got to produce some barrels out here. Can we get this canceled lease on production? Now we got another one. We got this other canceled lease, we got to deal with, what we going to do with it? And is this the solution? Can we depend on our geologists to put some lock in some of these so we can roll them out the door?
Are we still talking about six barrels a day? Is that our, is that our goal?
I don't know, because we had Mr. Hesford coming in here saying, I can turn those six into more. But we didn't hear what he had to say. And we got a man here saying, I can take it up from X to here, but you asked the question, how much? And I didn't hear it either. So I say, let's not stop, let's keep going, see if we can get some lock in this lease.
Here, Councilman Red Eagle, then I have a gentleman like to say. Do we, do we need another motion to, uh, just like Councilman Redd was saying? Do we need another motion to get the mineral council designate, designate Bill Lynn to operate this St. John Skinner unit?
We passed it.
So what are we, what are we talking about then?
I'm just saying he's got.
That's it, that's it right there. To form a motion. Are you done, sir?
Uh, I did make another motion.
No.
Designate Bill Lynn to operate the St. John's unit. This is required, not a motion, right now. If he does, I'll make a motion to do that.
Can I have a motion on the floor to cover that, and repeat just what you said?
Yeah. So that Bill, that mineral council designate Bill Lynn to operate the St. John Skinner unit. We already have contractors out there that don't, don't fit this. That's my motion.
Do we have, uh, Councilman Curry to come back for the vote?
Yes, sir.
That's my.
I'm entertaining a second at this time. You have announced your motion on the floor. Do we have a second? I'm going to ask for a second one more time. I'd like to give consideration again to Councilwoman, let her step back in. And we need to be very vigilant on how we assist her. So this, this gets a little out of hand. And then, I've got to wait just a moment to give her a chance to reply. Whether she wants a second to this motion. By the way, everybody's heard this.
Chairman, I ask, do we do this when anybody else steps out of the room? Chairman, do I ask, do we do this when anybody else steps out of the room?
No, sir, we don't.
Why are we treating this one special?
She's special. And this is pretty big, she didn't get a chance to vote on OMC four like we did. I'll give her just a moment, and I'll call for the third, second. I'd like to ask for a second on Councilman Red Eagle's motion. Hearing none, motion fails. Mr. Patterson, would you like to say a short word? Very short, bro?
Yes, sir, very short. Uh, I was there the day that we got the two hundred thousand from Congress, and they told us that day that we wanted like a hundred and eighty, wasn't it? And we asked two hundred, and we got it, and they gave us the two hundred, and they said, don't come back and ask for anymore. And so, there it is, you're going, you're going with it.
Wait, we know, thank you. Chairman? Yes, sir, just a moment, I want to catch up. Councilwoman Curry, we had a motion that was put on the floor to allow our geologists to operate the Skinner Sand Unit. I requested a second three times, and receiving none, the motion has failed. So that is what you have missed so far.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And out of consideration, I went, I had to go ahead, one of the councils already asked, so I had to go ahead with that. Now that the motion has died, Council.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. To Mr. Patterson's statement, I was present by Zoom during the OSH Nation Congress, when we requested the two hundred thousand dollars to operate the St. John Skinner Sand Unit for the OSH Minerals Council. And it was not any eight hundred thousand or a million, or it was two hundred thousand dollars. And it was, we asked for five hundred thousand dollars for something that I won't go into. We asked for two hundred thousand dollars for the MI three study, that didn't happen. We asked for two hundred thousand dollars for us to operate the St. John Skinner Sand Unit, for a total of nine hundred thousand dollars, in addition to our IDC.
Yes, sir.
So the total amount that came over from the nation, from what I understand, I haven't got to see it, because our staff and our chairman won't show it to us. So I haven't got to see the numbers, but I understand, we got a million and some odd thousand dollars, two hundred for St. John, two hundred for MI three, five hundred for something else, and.
Excuse me, you saw the application to Congress for the monies itself.
I was in the meeting with.
You just said you were at the meeting.
I was at, I was in the Zoom meeting, and I know the number was two hundred thousand. It wasn't what Mr. Patterson.
No, you just encompassed underfunding, you were in the meeting.
I was in the meeting.
Then you should have regained and retained that information that you just heard on the application to Congress.
Well, I don't have the, I don't have the.
Chairman, it was an open meeting, and anybody could ask any question, that included Congress and all the minerals.
Yes, thank you.
So we had a chance to voice our concerns, our opinions, and several of the Congress did, had some direct questions, and they, they, they said, yeah, they told us that and asked us, you guys want to keep coming back for more and more? And we're like, no, this is one shot at each time.
Excuse me.
Counselor.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. If you recall, Councilman Redcorn, it was not open, it was an executive session. Do you remember that? So it was not open. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Yes, sir. And with that kind of clarity, is there anything you'd like to add before I move on?
I believe if councilmembers have an issue with staff, then that needs to be taken up in executive, and not in council.
Yes. Uh, I'd like to go ahead and move on. I think, once I started kind of looking at the timing, thank you for your consideration. We will have to work out the event of our next directive for the Skinner Unit, and we do not have that available at this time. I appreciate your time, sir. With that, counsel?
Motion for a five minute recess.
No, I need to go on one more, then I got to leave, my wife's having surgery today, and I, I just want to tell you, I'm leaving. Thank you, sir. Uh, I'd like to move on down to agenda, and have, our next agenda item will be Salaran Gentlemen, make sense at home.
I have a presentation on a Trump drive. First, I would like to thank Jim Trumbull, William Trumbull's brother, for proposing Salaran Technologies to come to the Mineral Council, we're honored to be here. I also want to thank Bill Trumbull, who is part of Salaran Technologies, for proposing this, this proposal that we're about to present on behalf of Salaran Technologies Mineral Council, for the purpose of improving the data flow from, from the mineral rights that you own within the toilet and the last one.
Did you hand out the same presentation, any of you give us?
I have two copies, but this early copy is, is a little bit different in, in a few ways.
Go ahead and take care of it. Proceed, sir.
Yes, sir. So again, thank you for taking your time, I'm going to just introduce Salaran Technologies, we are a technology group. We have two primary groups, PSIOT, which is more manufacturing inside, and SafeTrack is, is supporting a lot of construction and outdoor safety environments, two very relevant field-based manufacturing, information-based. Next slide. So first, level setting, this is an area that, as a program manager, I like to do, is to make sure everyone is basically aware of what the technology that we're using, and IOT is Internet of Things, it's, it's the communication and connecting multiple things to the cloud, and the cloud is the web, the internet, that sort of, that's like. So the main benefit of IOT is it brings machine-to-machine technology with big data and machine learning. So with data, you can produce algorithms to take the data and present it in, in real useful data way, that either can make decisions automatically, or give you the information that you need to make decisions. We use IOT to connect sensors and physical objects to provide that data. So next slide. So connections in cloud, there's many things that perform that connection versus connected devices, wired, wireless, Bluetooth, we connect sensors, and then we control things like lights, various actuators, and intelligence data, brings it to your phone and computer systems. Next slide. So PSIOT is basically an Internet of Things technology group, bringing manufacturing solutions, manufacturing operations, here's a array of items that we have, next slide. And so it's focused on operational safety and quality. So we, we want to take items that manufacturers have and bring data, one of the items that, for instance, Mr. Trumbull here has worked on, is noise detection. OSHA has an eighty-five dB level for noise, we would detect it and alert when people need to be wearing hearing protection. And so, and the, the real power is not to just alert, but have that data available for OSHA, so we have capillary data that you can have to show OSHA that you're in compliance. We prove, that's one of the things that we are, are so. Okay, so that's with manufacturing in a manufacturing facility. Next slide. So this is an example of a continuous diesel monitor, actually came from where, where I live, a fire department, they were concerned about the fumes in the fire station, so we developed this product that not only monitors noxious oxides, which is a result of diesel, but oxygen level and bulk temperature, as well as particulates. So diesel has particulates with it, and we provide various sensor-based particulates, and you can see a dashboard there, which shows all the information. This is a powerful device, because a lot of fire stations are spending a lot of money on mitigation strategies, which take the, the running truck diesel fumes out through the actuation systems, and these cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. Our data that we presented to our Bureau Fire Chiefs, that really nominal amounts of whatever sense, and certainly not at dangerous levels, so we think this would back up their use in not having to provide expensive mitigation strategies to keep their fire system, fire people safe. Next slide. That's just a dashboard showing actual data, just, and a picture of the facility that we monitor, with some results. Next slide. Okay, so another product, this is outside, a facility where you don't have power and wifi, so we focus on battery operations. Next slide. And this SafeTrack is a continuous space monitor, so one of the things that OSHA considers is anything that is not lived in, that is a confined space, let's say it's a basement, it is an area of risk for people, so we got to develop a sensor that looks like, looks for noxious fumes, as well as flammable fumes. So you go into an environment that's not lived in, you don't know what's there, so this detects if there's anything there. They also have sensors on people themselves, so if they stop moving, it alerts and, and can, can give the management information that, hey, somebody in the field was down. So this is designed not to have power, not to have communications, but we are a self-communicating device with this, so three pieces work together. Next slide. Okay, so basically, we're using sensors, environmental sensors, sensors that can trigger with, you know, pressure, for instance, you push a button, location, which includes access, you know, GPS, pressure, all those kind of sensors that can tell you in general what your location is, and then data, which can do a lot of different things, like what voltage is, currents that you're using, counts, and distances. Next slide. Actuators are the result of the data, we use horns and buzzers, and on is, is a vibration, text email, screen alert on, on the dashboard, control, time, energy, so actuators are what are the results of sensors, result of the data from the sensors. Okay, next slide. All right, so here I want to turn it over to William Trumbull, Bill, Jim's, Trumbull's brother, who's been working with us for a while. Go ahead with the next part of the present.
Thank you. The rest of this proposal is, deals directly with what you're proposing to deal with the OSH, OSH lands and the wealth on those lands.
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent. The purpose of the proposal is to simply provide you guys with data you need to properly manage your wells, both in a tactical and strategic manner. Is this on?
Yeah.
I don't know. Maybe you guys can hear me better now, I don't know.
You guys are talking.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, the, the whole point is, you want data, you have to have data in order to manage your lands in a tactical operation, strategic planning of the fields. So next slide. So what we're planning on, we're proposing a set of sensors to measure the temperatures, the pressures, the flow rates, and the levels in the various, in, in, in the various areas. And these will of course give us measures of volume, of transfers, of barrels of oil or water, and, and the levels inside the tanks. Next slide. And they're going to communicate with the outside world through fiber optics, wifi, LoRa cell, LTE, and satellite. Now, primarily, we're looking at going with fiber and wifi, because you guys are installing now a lot of fiber and so on, and that would make it very convenient for everybody. If a particular site does not have fiber or wifi available, we can do with the LTE, or the final fallback is always satellite.
Satellite phone.
Next slide. Okay, then the backend systems, you've got a data broker, which receives data in from the cloud. We have an input database, which takes the, that data and puts it in places where we need to have it. Some data analysis, which does, calculates results, translating flow rates and times and stuff into barrels and whatnot. And then we have the dashboard, the app server, the dashboard shows you, basically a real-time readout of, of what's going on in the field. The app server gives you a, a digested version of that same information. Next slide. Okay, now, what does this get us all? It gives us a measure of the various elements, the oil, the gas, and water flowing from wells into local tanks, and the tanks to the outputs. These measurements allow you to measure to within a tenth of a barrel of oil. Now, I'm saying a tenth of a barrel of oil, because in my analysis, I was assuming a twenty-foot diameter tank. I know a lot of tanks are smaller than that, and some may be larger than that, but that was the one I was assuming. Well, the measurement, measurement depth is a tenth of, one millimeter, which is one fortieth of an inch. And so on a twenty, so on a twenty-foot diameter, that thin layer winds up in about a tenth of a barrel. So that's the worst-case measure error in the measurement of the volume or something. And the measure of the tank is the less accurate than the flow meters. Now, the flow meters can measure down to within one, one percent of a barrel of oil. So that's much accurate. So the question is, how much oil and how much water is in the tank? Because our sensors can distinguish between the oil and the water. So if the fluid in the tank is starting settling out, separating, we can measure then how much is in the tank is water and how much is oil. Next slide. We then go from the pump to the tank. The pump, we measure the temp, pressure and temperature, the flumpy measure with the flow, with the flow meter, that, how much is flowing through the pipe. We can compensate into standard temperature and pressure by the pressure measurements. And we can, we can watch the tank level move with the acoustic level meter, thereby confirming that the flow is actually in the tank. The next one, thank you. Inside the tank, we can measure the amount of fluid in the tank with the acoustic flow meter. The rate of measurement is set by how long it takes to detect the bottom of the tank when the tank full. The signal is processed to detect the oil-water boundary, if there is one. I'm assuming that there's water in OSH oil, like there is in most everybody else's. Each time they enter, the, the time between, to the interfaces, the, the top of the fluid, the oil-water boundary, and the bottom of the tank, determines the, the depths, and knowing the percent of water from the well allows us to cross-check the, the depths with the pressure sensor. Next one. Then we have the output from the tank. Here, what we're doing is we're taking, when they open a valve, it sets off a signal. The signal says the output to the tank has been opened, and there's now going to be flow from the, from that, from the tank. It then measures how much flow is going out of the tank. We also track that level flipping inside the tank. And based on the, on how, how the changes in the, in the. And based on the, on how, how the changes in the, in the interface between the oil and the water, we know whether oil is being drawn or water is being drawn. And the amount that's showing on the flow meter would be how much the royalties were due because that's how much is actually in the end produced and carved off by the producer. Next one. So the data analytics, takes all this data, which we have produced, translates it into barrels of oil being produced from the wells and being stored in the tank, with output from the tank. The, the dashboard will reflect that data in real time and tabular something for available for the employees and so on. So now, is there any questions?
Yes. Now why are you making this presentation to the Mineral Council? What is it that you are proposing to the Mineral Council?
Okay, what we, what we need right now is a place to put this in place. We need a set of tanks, we need a, a oil field where we've got a pump, the tanks and an output from the tank.
So you want to test your equipment on the property, on our mineral sites?
Yeah.
Why don't you, why don't you go to one of our oil gas producers and ask them if you could do that?
Well, I, we were discussing that and we thought the best place to start would be at the Mineral Council. And if you guys say we need to go to producers and go to producers.
I just don't know what involvement the Mineral Council has in the technology. We don't operate wells and we don't, we don't collect this type of information. The Bureau of Indian Affairs around the corner does, maybe.
Well, the thing is, the, the key thing with all this information is it's one, it's independent of everybody else. It's an independent set of data and it's done by a machine, so it's an objective data set. And it's an audible trail. So, you know, nobody has to trust anybody because you can sit back and go back and all what was produced on what day, at what time and what flow rates were detected. Now, I understand the Mineral Council right now, well, I, I understand that the nation's taken over a few wells and maybe one of those would be the best one for us to use. I don't know. That's up to, that's up to the, the OSAH nation, both the Mineral Councils may even try. Glenn here is probably the better one to address some of this stuff because I'm a technology guy and not, and not really that much of a business guy. But my understanding was that the way we wanted to approach the Mineral Council first and see if this is something the council would be interested in supporting, not necess, you know, not necessarily doing anything, but it'll be supported. And then once we've got support, we can go to producers and see if they're willing to do it. Or if the OSAH nation happens to own a few wells, maybe they can use one of those.
So you're asking us if, if we would not eject, I guess? Do you concur to our mineral producers?
Well, my, my brother's looking at allowing us to use some of the communication infrastructure and having a server in the, in the data set is coming up. So this information would be available right there to the OSAH automatically because it's on your server.
And who's going to install the equipment and, and at whose cost? The producers?
We, we would look at developing a prototype on existing platform. We would be looking to, you know, pull together, we, we've done research on what's currently available. And a lot of the currently available equipment assumes that you have engineers that put it, cobble it all together, like you'll have an oil tank monitor or you may have a pump monitor or you may have something that would actually look at the security of the facility itself, does anyone who's been around who's owned operations. We're, we're proposing a holistic approach where we combine all the elements for oil field monitoring. That includes the pump that pulls, watch the, the pump, how much oil is produced, oil and water, and monitor the tank for how much is oil and water, what's the volume of the tank, give an indication of when it should be pumped out and then how much was pumped out and get the data back in real time to a, a dashboard.
So do you know if any of our producers already have this equipment installed on their facilities?
We have no information about any facilities within the OSAH royalty fields that are currently using oil field.
I guess I just don't understand what you're proposing to us.
Yeah.
You want us to, you're, you're introducing us to this technology. It's, some of it's been around for a little while. We've seen it, some of it's seen it at oil shows, this type of stuff. And I could see where it'd be really nice to have that ability to know in real time, be able to take a new cellphone and access that kind of information. I understand that technology is there that you all have. I just don't understand what it is with the Mineral Council, what our involvement would be. Would it be for us, are you looking for us to, to demand that all our producers install this on their tank facilities? Or are you wanting us, you wanting us to say that you have our blessing to go present it to the BIA to help them monitor what they're supposed to already be monitoring? Because the BIA has a fiduciary duty to us to do all these things, not with this technology, but to track how much oil and water is produced and stored in the, in that sort of thing. Is around the corner, the Bureau of Indian Affairs monitors all that and reports all that and, and reconciles what the oil companies that pick up the oil show that they had picked up versus what, what they themselves have witnessed. They reconcile, reconcile all that. So I'm thinking that this might be something useful for the Bureau of Indian Affairs. I just don't know what we Mineral Council members, what involvement that we would have in this particular technology.
In discussion, you know, with Mr. Trumbly and Jim, Mr. Trumbly, Bill, we, we think that the advantage to the Mineral Council is the information that if you have all of these holders within the reservation, that you have own mineral rights, have accurate data, then you have more data to present to your, your councils to, of what you're.
That our producers don't have this equipment installed on their.
Yes, right. So we, we are looking, so a, a company that owns a lot of wealth, it's a lot of funds, will present this, this same kind of equipment on their oil field. They would pick and choose different suppliers and then they cobble it together and get that information so that the company knows how much their oil field is producing. And that's a real value, right? And then they, if they have royalties, they out they have accurate information. And, and this case, we see Mineral Council here probably not having that information, a real time information. And, and if we work with the Mineral Council, we think we would have a viable product to sell to other tribes as well as other commercial entities. We would offer royalties based on our equipment sales because you work with us.
Yeah, but we don't do that type of.
Yes, understand.
A function, that is something that's done by the Bureau of Indian Affairs. They report to us their findings and monthly, we had, you were here earlier today, they gave a, a report today to us. We get, we receive, you know, more detailed information than what was summarized today. But we've received reports from the BIA, but we don't collect it daily. So it's like, I'm thinking that you should be presenting this to the BIA, to our producers as a, as a, as something to utilize. I just don't see how, what, what us, what we Mineral Council members can do with this information.
Break it down, sir. Councilman, and then second chair, Will Rappel said.
I might have discussed this today, I can see where this would be if the tribe did move into their own production or something like this would be beneficial. And if one thing, if you're sitting there and you've got 94 leases out there and you've got eight filled then and they have, and the oil's going into the tanks and you can look at your phone and determine whether or not the volume of stuff is down in one certain area, so the guy that's checking the tanks like that, he may not have to drive all the way over to my cord because he knows the problems down here by home. So, so, so it gives you that up to date technology where you can understand those kinds of things. It's about accountability. It's about whenever a tank truck goes up there, they're supposed to be pulled out 200 gallons and, and they pull out two, 203, you know? I'm not saying people will be dishonest.
And you're talking not gallons, barrels.
Well, barrels, either way, because I said it just, it makes it, makes you, gives you the information to where you know it's more precise. Again, I think it's something where not being saltwater, but you know how much is going in there. And I, I think there's benefits to that, whether it's, I mean, we're, we're the big part of this old 12,000 president committee here, that, that's us. So for us to have that information on a daily basis, if we decide to do it, I mean, we're not saying the producers have to do it, we're not forcing anything on anybody. This is just something where if someone decided to, I was a producer, I wanted to know what's going on out there and I didn't have time to, I had COVID and I couldn't go check my wells. It'd be nice to have that, see what's going in the tank. So I mean, again, it's just something where I think, like they're talking about techn, all, all of ours is talking about, I mean, technology is, is coming into this, this is not nothing new, but with the internet and all the stuff that the nation's doing, it's all the big grant money, things like that, this is something you can check and get benefit on that. So I could, I could see an upside to this as well.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I would add that it would add value to the lease to have the, the specific data that clearly indicates, you know, with, with, with the hardware, the sensors and the long term history, would add value to the lease and, and the, in, in any sale of the lease, having that data. If I was someone who's going to bid, you know, seeing this long history dashboard data analysis done on it, that would be very clear.
Yes, sir.
One more.
Yes, sir.
This is what he talked about today, you know, I mean, like if we've got that data on our branch, because OSAH station, we end up having leases that, that get terminated, stuff like that, that happens to have that tracking system on there. So we have, we put it up for a lease, so we don't have to be knocking on the door here trying to figure out what was, what was available. We, we might have some of that data ourselves to share with the producers and therefore, and maybe we will bid to work a, pay more premium price for a lease. If we can show them, you know, here's some data that we've collected with this system. So I mean, I, I understand that, could increase that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
It, it's moved a long way from the cipher system that develops. Your, your new technology is the upgrade. And also let me finish. You're almost done. What I'd like to see is a counselor do some of this, since many of us have been in the gauging and calculating of the effort, there is a big question. Not only of what counselor Vars talking about, of all producers, we might be looking at a different event where you make this a mobile effort that we can go in anytime and, and set it up, get, get a satcom unit hooked up. And that's what they were looking at years ago, but the technology's not there. So I think if you can update us on that, council would love to hear about it. I'm going to go ahead and wrap them up right after I talk to these gentlemen. Sir, do you have anything to add?
Uh, I was just going to answer what Councilman Rebar was talking about there. In the past, back like these gentlemen here, whenever they, you know, bring on some technology to share with us, in the past, back whenever we all worked together and, and, you know, they actually listened to what our recommendations was, we would recommend some stuff like this to them. And usually, back in the day, there'd be a LSE that would, well, yeah, I'd like to try this. And then they would go out there and install it on their tank battery or on their lease. And we did, because I can remember even me and Kenny Bob having to do this, like Rock Creek or something over there toward, over toward the east, ever since the short monitoring system, I think it was maybe like on Shore or whatever. But, you know, we did like a three or six month check on it and then, you know, that was, that was it. That was a report that, you know, got filed to the council or whatever. But, you know, that's back whenever I was working, that's back whenever I worked with the Minerals Council, I mean, with Minerals Department. So that's, you know, that's where, that's where this kind of stuff kind of came from. But like I said, that was back whenever we all worked together. Okay, thank you.
Councilman.
Uh, my question was answered, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much. We'll be getting back with you. I have nothing to take on the next agenda item, an executive. I'd like to move on down if the council approves, yes.
I'd like to make a request we talked about. An executive, a continental lease, is there any question? Any executive, make your request.
Is there other counsel, would you like to spend a moment on that?
On?
On hearing about the leasing that the councilman just brought up?
We talked about continental leases the last time.
Yes, sir, I'd rather not this time. If it's okay, I'm going to have to say no. I went out to seven, but we are going to get back to it. With that being said, only other issue I have is boardable. And Mr. Reynolds, do we have the, do we need a resolution to allow us to, is this to pay the boardable's contract? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Counsel.
I, I guess just seeing the emails flying back and forth, people kind of like it. So I would, if that's okay, make a motion.
I wish you would, please.
Thank the boardable.
Yes, sir.
Chief Ross.
Second.
Second. I have a motion on the floor, Councilman Redcorn, seconded by Councilman Big Horse. Any other discussion? Councilman Red Barn and Councilman.
I just wondered if we want to recite what the terms of the arrangement is? Is that, should that be part of the resolution or not?
The contract's already covered, but if you'd like to.
I don't have it in mind.
All we have is the actual draft, I will have received.
I haven't seen that. But if we're talking, what, is it a three year commitment or is it a year to year?
It's three year, yeah.
Three year.
Yes, sir, at $3,670.78 first year funded to the C395, which had to be involved in the rest.
It's in there, okay. I, I haven't seen it.
Yes, it's on the back of those handouts.
Oh.
I, I found it just by digging down.
Okay, okay, okay.
Counsel.
Lacy, is it working out pretty good?
Okay.
A lot of those work for those guys, yeah, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Makes our job easier, yes.
With that, I'd like to call for a question.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar? Councilman Chappellford?
Oh, boy.
Oh.
Chairman Waller?
Wait, I have to go. I'm ready to talk, man.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Secretary Chair, Mr. Wallace?
Oh, I need.
Councilwoman Curry, yes.
Our figure is in the red slide. Yes, with that, I have one more item, adjutant, to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll move.
So move. Second, I have a motion on the floor of a Councilman Redcorn, seconded by Councilman Red Eagle. Any discussion, please? We have those before you. Hearing none, I'd like to call for the question.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford?
Wallace.
Chairman Waller?
All right.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Secretary Chair, Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to entertain a motion adjutant, please.
I'll move.
Seconded by Chairman Waller, I have a motion on the floor, a second Chair, Mr. Wallace, seconded by Chairman Edward Waller. I'd like to ask, any discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to call for a question for adjutant.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chapp, Chappellford?
We, we.
Chairman Waller?
We, we.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Secretary Chair, Mr. Wallace?
Yes, he is.
Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, we are now adjourned and our fate has gotten, brother. So that's another reason. Thank you all, thank you very much, I'm out here. I'm out here.